8.2, Discussion Regarding the City's Five-Year Capital Improvement Program. Maurice. And Susan.
Mayor Martinez, members of the City Council, Susan and I are going to share the presentation on this, so I'm going to try to get it set up here real quick.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight Maurice and I will present the Capital Improvement Program. The CIP covers fiscal years 2017 through 2021. The CIP is an infrastructure funding plan. It focuses on long-term financial planning. The CIP reflects the vision and goals of the community. Over the years, the City Council has effectively used CIP plans to guide the development of These are the CIP priorities set by the City Council. This is a comprehensive list. These priorities are consistent with the city's mission to create infrastructure to support a vibrant community. Several of the priorities might apply to one project. Some key criteria are used to evaluate CIP projects. The goal is to allocate resources to projects that meet the community's goals and objectives. Projects that are considered high priority by the community, the City Council, and the advisory bodies are included in the CIP. Mandated projects, emergency projects, and improvement projects are also included in the CIP. The city uses restricted and unrestricted resources to fund capital projects. The restricted funds include impact fees and developer contributions, grants, special funds, and funds provided by the former redevelopment agency. The unrestricted resources include general fund contributions and surplus tax incrementation, sorry, surplus tax increment allocations to the capital fund and the housing programs. In June 2013, the City Council adopted a policy to allocate 75% of the surplus tax increment to the capital fund. The CIP reflects a proposed policy update to change the allocation from 75% to 50%. The 25% allocation will be given to the general fund to restore services. In exchange, the commercial property transfer tax will be committed for capital projects. As you know, capital projects implement over a period of time, and commercial property transfer tax is less predictable. The cash flow can be better managed by facing capital projects as revenues are realized and available. So this change will give the general fund more stable revenue to support city services. There are several large projects in the CIP such as the Bayfront Bridge Project, the Transit Center, and the Art Center. So it is important to set aside reserves to cover unexpected costs. We recommend setting up two reserves for the CIP. The first one is to establish an infrastructure reserve in the general capital fund for $5 million. This reserve can be used to cover unexpected capital costs. This reserve requires a one-time transfer from the general fund. The second recommendation is to establish an implementation reserve in the capital fund for $2.5 million. The cost can be used to, the reserve can be used to cover cost overruns during the implementation period. This reserve does not require a transfer from the general fund. And this concludes my presentation. Now I will turn over to Maurice to present the projects. Thank you.
I got it, I got it, I got it. Thank you, Susan. So before I start talking about the new projects, the upcoming projects in the CIP, I wanted to remind you that the current CIP, the existing CIP, has 80 projects in it. And we've completed quite a bit of them with our small staff. There's 15 projects that we've, well, there's 12 that we've completed, and then there's three that we have underway, and about, almost $12 million worth of work. And so we feel very proud about that. And we also have others in the mill right now, like the South Bayfront Bridge that we've started working on. But for the proposed CIP, we've got 86 projects. 22 of them are new. So there are some that are, that were there originally that we're continuing to work on, and we have 22 new ones. We're talking about a program of over five years of about $115 million. For the first two years, the first year, the 15, or 16, 17 fiscal year, we're going to be looking at $52 million in appropriations, and in the second year, $9 million in appropriations. Of the over-five-year period, we've got a funding plan for the 86 projects. There are three projects that are in that list that don't have 100% funding. Those three projects include the Christie Housing Site, and we don't have enough money at this point identified for the remediation of that site. Then there's a project we put in there for undergrounding overhead utilities in the North Hollis area. That project would be over $13 million. There's about $6 million, depending upon the size of the projects the city pursues. If we wanted to do it all, we estimated about $6 million in funding that we'd need to identify, but we could always scale the project back. And then, of course, the Quiet Zones we've been talking about for many years, that's about a $5 million project. We actually pushed that project out to the very last year and only funded about $250,000 to kind of re-energize the study that we did years ago. We have projects in various categories, and I'd like to remind you, I put a worksheet at your, at the diast, it's an enlargement of the spreadsheet in your staff report. But we have various categories: community facilities, vehicles, transportation, streetscape, and so on. And this shows the breakdown percentage-wise in the various categories. So as this pie chart shows, there's 47% in community facilities, and you can see the wedge there for bicycle pedestrian at 4.49 million, which is 4% if you look at the categories. But if you actually add the South Bayfront Bridge, which is our biggest project, that's a $20 million project when you include the whole bridge and the Horton Landing Park, about 20% of all our funding is going towards Bike Ped, which is pretty good for, you know, really, really makes us look good from a climate action standpoint that we're really targeting that kind of projects. What I'd like to do is go through some of the bigger projects in the list. Of course, we have 86 projects. I can answer questions about any of them, but I'm going to kind of identify the real big ones we're getting started with that make up that $56 million in appropriations. So we have the South Bayfront Bridge, $20.8 million, and we're moving that project forward right now. I've been dealing with the railroad, getting good response with them. They, their Structures Division in Omaha has approved the design, which is good news for us. And so they're trying to work within their local branches in Roseville to try to figure out what it's going to take for us to get the necessary easements and agreements with them. And once we get a letter from the railroad, we can move forward with our CPUC permit. And we're hoping to get some answers within the next week or two. The Transit Center is part of that $56 million project. Of course, we're not administering that project, but the money's coming, there's about $9.5 million coming through the city on that project. So that's a big part of the $56 million project appropriations. And then the Corporation Yard, that's a big project that we're undertaking. So what we're trying to do is move that project forward towards the end of this year. As you know, we entered into a contract with EKI to do the remediation part of that project. But this is in addition to that contract, and we're trying to coordinate the two. And hopefully, we'd be beginning construction of the remediation towards the end of this year. The Hollis Street Fire Station, $2.3 million on that project. We're doing a design of an EOC upgrade to that building. We want to rework the floor plan in the EOC and take, make better space of that ground floor. And there's a little bit of seismic retrofit work that needs to be done to the apparatus bay so that we're certain that that building's going to be standing after an earthquake. And I should note on that one, there's some additional design work that we're looking at adding to the contract to try to minimize the additional work later on in, during construction. We have a project where we want to update all our old streetlights. Some of these lights are 25 years or more in age, and they're fading, the poles are faded, and they're starting to look kind of shabby. And we also want to update them to do LED fixtures. And so we want to move that project forward this summer. Then, of course, the Art Center. That's a big project for us, but for the first two years, we don't have as much funding appropriated. The big money would come in the third year. We have money identified for that project, but for this coming year, we want to do a feasibility study, hire a consultant to look at the building, figure out what we want to do on that site. We want to kind of take a look at the plans that we're already entitled to see if that's something we really want to pursue, or whether or not we want to start from ground zero or what. And then in the second year, once we figure out what we want to do, we could go through the entitlement process, go through the design effort, and then hopefully in the third year, start building something there. Emeryville Greenway, Stamford to Powell. We've been talking about this project for a number of years now. It's the next one on our plate to start packaging. It's 1.3 million. We have grant funds there. We want to make sure we spend that money before the grant funds expire. Then, of course, we have about $11 million in housing projects in fiscal, it's broken down into the various fiscal years, but that's a big chunk of the overall $115 million worth of projects. So we did bring the CIP to various committees, and we have some feedback we'd like to share with you. We did talk briefly about it during the prioritization at City Council, and we heard from council that you really want to push forward on the South Bayfront Bridge. And the other project we heard from council was lighting on Powell Street. That was, we had talked a little bit about a project where the existing lighting is in need of, we're starting to lose lights because they're rusted out at the base, and so we need to rush a project forward to replace the lighting system there. For the Planning Commission, they actually had recommendations to add two projects. They want to see a gateway on Powell Street at Christie. And they also wanted a project where we would paint the water tower, the private water tower on Powell Street, to promote civic identity. And their recommendation was to take $2 million in funding from some other projects. I don't know that, what we would do in that regard, but we could always add those two projects to the list in the outer years and try to identify funding sources in the outer years, if that's what you desire to do. The Public Art Committee had recommendations that they wanted the city to implement all the CIP projects for the art, in the art category. They really want us to push forward the Rip Rap Project at Point Emery so that we can implement that art project that was eventually go out there. And then they want us to move forward ASAP on the Art Center. The Economic Development Advisory Committee looked at the CIP. They didn't have any specific recommendations on the projects, but they did send us a letter identifying priorities, in particular, maintenance of existing facilities, technology, and housing projects. The Public Works Committee didn't have any recommending, specific recommendations, or either did the Budget and Governments Committee. But the Budget and Governments Committee, one of the members didn't like the project we have on the list to construct a temporary police station at the Rec Center trailers. So that's something you might want to talk about tonight. And then, of course, the Housing Committee, they support implementing the housing projects that we've listed. They did want the city to consider adding more funding to one of the projects where we fund below-market rate housing acquisition. Right now, I believe we have $400,000 a year in that fund, in that project, and they wanted the city to bump it up to $600,000. And that third recommendation was to create like a revolving fund for that purpose. So we're here tonight to hear any recommendations from City Council, answer your questions on, any feedback on any of the projects.
Parks and Rec didn't have any?
Well, they meet tomorrow. So we'll be with them tomorrow, and we'll talk about it. So that's scheduled for tomorrow night. And then, so our next step is to hear back from council, incorporate your recommendations, and then we're going to come back at the June 6, June meeting in City Council to adopt the CIP. And of course, we want to hear from the public if there's any questions about any of the specific project, and I'm here to answer them. I know we have a big group here to talk about the dog park, and I can answer questions on that as well.
Clarifying questions?
Yeah. So when a, when a new idea for new project comes forth, what's the process to actually get it on, on the matrix of new projects?
Well, typically, if I hear about the projects as we're developing the CIP, I add it to the list, and then we take a look at it, and if it seems like a reasonable project that is affordable and we have funding for, I oppose it. If it's something we don't have funding for, then it's listed as unfunded or, you know, but typically, I, you know, if anybody asks-
There's really no filtering or vetting.
No, no. This, this time around, I mean, in previous CIP adoptions, we've had public sessions where we put stickers on projects that we liked.
Exactly.
But this time, we didn't go through that effort. We actually kind of rushed this through in about three months. In the past, it's taken us, the last time we did it was six-to-eight month process. And then before that, we didn't do a CIP for almost six years because we were dealing with the dissolution of redevelopment, so. So this was a real rush job to put it together. All the projects have funding in it, so except for those three that I've identified. So if there's some other projects people want to hear, I mean, we could hear it tonight and see if we could add it. We're always open to that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just to clarify, the council, obviously, ultimately, I believe every other year or so, as part of the CIP process, updates and approves. Essentially, that's, what we're here for this evening is to get your approval on the CIP list. This time, when Maurice describes how we move this through rapidly, it is so that we have collaboration, coordination, for the first time between the, the city's budget process and to incorporate the CIP so that we're looking truly at the big picture. And the idea would be that from now on, the CIP would be at least updated, if not many times in between, but would be updated along with the two-year budget process.
Any more clarifying questions? All right, let's open this up for public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item?
All the dog park people.
Yeah, please, come forward.
Come on, that was your time. Yay, dogs.
You have three minutes.
First, I wanted to thank my, all my neighbors and readers of Evil Eye and fellow dog advocates for turning out on a Tuesday evening. Also want to thank the 400 or so folks, I haven't checked it, but you're not to 425-
They're still coming in.
Who have signed the petition I started barely a week ago, so clearly, there's a lot of support, you know, for this Hallock Beach Dog Park, we're calling it. Several organizations have stepped forward, Park, Park Avenue Residence Committee, WAN, West Oakland Neighbors, WOKA, Pido, Emeryville Oakland Target, we have a representative here, Oakland D3 Councilmember Lynette Gibson, former council member Nancy Nadel, who owns the Oakland Chocolate Company, which is facing the proposed dog park. Odog, we have a representative here, and also the neighboring businesses at the Beet Street area, so.
This is my dog.
You know? Her name's Fiona. Someone once referred to her as the ambassador of evil. Me and my wife rescued her about six years ago. We think she's about eight now, which means probably only have four years left with her, sadly. When I got her, she was neglected and sick, and, you know, we were able to nurse her back to health. People live in condominiums and apartments, which there are, of course, ample number of in Emeryville. We don't have the luxury of, you know, throwing our dogs in the backyard when they need to do their business. You know, we have to take them for a walk several times a day. But a funny thing happens when you're forced to walk your neighborhood several times a day. Talk to people. Talk to your neighbors. I've met hundreds of my neighbors through Fiona. They don't know who I am, but they know who Fiona is. Dogs build community. They make our community safer. They are the eyes of this community. We owe it to them to advocate for them. I've seen when something is important to you five, it can move mountains. This is important to residents, so I want to advocate that you make this something that's clearly a priority for residents, a priority for you. I also want to throw my support behind the Paladoe Park and Greenway, adjacent to the Broken Rack. I first wrote about this project in 2012, when the city was supposed to break ground in spring of 2013. Most people I speak with, I ask people, you know, what's, what's the best thing about Emeryville? And the Greenway is like always in the top three of what people like best about the city. Just, you guys did a phenomenal job with that, and I would like to see it complete, starting with this segment. So I want to advocate that that be made a very high priority, along with the Hallock Beach Dog Park. Thank you.
Thank you, and if folks want to speak, just go ahead and line up, please.
Hi, my name's Vanessa Jeskey, and I'm representing the Oakland Dog Owners Group. I am a resident of Oakland, but I work in Emeryville, I have for the last eight years, just on 1500 Park, right near where this dog run will be. And I think, I just wanted to draw some parallels between some of the other parks that the Odog Group has developed in Oakland and this proposed dog run, specifically Mosswood Park. There, that was a blighted area, tons of illegal dumping, drug use, similar to this area in Emeryville. And by putting in the dog park there, it really curbs that and brings in community. And there's a lot of just peer pressure amongst other, the dog park users to, to just keep, pick up trash and maintain the area. All of the Oakland dog parks that the Odog has developed are maintained by the community. The only thing that the city does is if we need new chips, they bring them to us, and volunteers do all of that maintenance, and it's been going on for 15 years. And there's always people willing to do that. People really care about and are passionate about having places to take their dogs when they don't have yards, and so they take a lot of pride in that space. And this is a space that is neglected, and I think that the dog park, of course, will change that for the better. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name's Taylor, I'm the senior manager at the Target in Oakland-Emeryville. And I'm here tonight basically just to show the Target's approval and support of the dog park. And then I also wanted to share a letter from my boss, the store team leader Salvador Vela, in support of the dog park as well. So I'll go ahead and read that, it's short and sweet. Hello, city of Emeryville council members. I'm writing in support of the proposed Hallock Beach Dog Park project adjacent to our Emeryville Oakland store. The area has been a challenging one for us and has had an impact on our store's security and the safety due to the fact that it is a covered, poorly lit, and a non-high-traffic area. Some incidents include tampering with electrical boxes outside our building, which presents a fire hazard, as well as unfortunate situations where team members and guests have been accosted in that area. We think creating an amenity for nearby neighbors and patrons of our store would be the best possible use of this space. We will advocate strongly that our corporate office provides us resources to assist in any way we can, including team member volunteer cleanup. We are in the process of trying to reallocate funds being used currently for a private security company which oversees that area to possibly support with restocking supplies for the park. Recruiting the eyes of people and their pets will help make this a safer area for everyone. Target has a well-established track record of corporate responsibility and team-driven volunteer events. We feel this corporate and city government collaboration can serve as a model for other similar projects, and we look forward to this becoming a reality for the Oakland and Emeryville communities. Thank you, Salvador Vela, store team leader.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ray Kidd. I, I live in Oakland. I live right on the other side of the freeway, right off 34th Street. I'm glad to hear that Target is supporting this. I think if they can help supplement with some of the CIP funding, I'm sure that might help your decision. I am the co-chair of West Oakland Neighbors, and I also am on the Community Advisory Committee for the City Slicker Farm Park that will be having its grand opening on June 11th and 12th, that weekend, with a lot of activities and dignitaries. I hope you all can come. It's at 2847 Peralta, it's a 1.4 acre park and urban farm. I bring this up because we did a lot of community planning and charrettes before this park was done, before the final design was made for this park. And there was no greater request for any item to go in this park than a off-leash dog area for this park. And so that area, that we'd actually just put into the park, an off-leash dog area. However, this is, although it's a public park, it is owned and operated by a private nonprofit, City Slicker Farms is the, will be operating this park. And trying to get insurance for a dog park by a nonprofit is almost impossible, so that dog park had to be eliminated from the City Slicker Farm Park. That means there is no dog park in all of West Oakland, and there is no dog park in any of this part of Emeryville, so there's a huge need for that. There's a huge demand for that. You know, the, there's a dog park at, as part of the East Bay Regional Park System, Point Isabel, right? You're probably familiar with that, in El Cerrito. It is the single most popular dog park, and the single most popular park in the East Bay Regional Park System. Almost a million visitors a year go there. That shows you what's needed, I mean, what's, what's, what's demanded. If you, you don't really have to go very far to look, to go around the neighborhood and see all these people walking their dogs. I mean, for better or worse, I think we can say there are a lot more households with dogs than there are with children. And we have, we did include a children's playground in the farm park, and there are a number of children's playgrounds in Emeryville, probably should be more. But there is no dog park, and we need one, and I think that it would be a wise use of the CIP funds for the small amount that's, that's going to be needed to construct this dog park and make it available for Emeryville and Oakland. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jaclyn Hampton, I've lived in Emeryville since 1992. I want to thank Emeryville used to have a feral cat fund, and so on behalf of myself and the clan of the 10 or so feral cats that my neighbors and I are still feeding, we support the dog park. I'm ready to volunteer, and I hope that you'll include it in the CIP. Thank you.
My name's Adam, I'm an Emeryville homeowner. I'm not a dog person, I'm a cat person. However, I do support this dog park. That area is an area of flight, dumping. I've been accosted by folks there, and what better way to combat blight, crime, and hostility than developing community? And dog parks develop community, and I think it would be a benefit not only to the people who live in the area, who travel through the area, who shop in the area, and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Whittle, I'm a preschool teacher here in Emeryville, ended up taking children to field trips over at Temuscale Creek Park for about 10 years now. And I've seen the, how it's transformed over the years. Specifically with the addition of the dog park, it's created a very warm and stable environment for people to meet, talk to each other, interact for however it long takes your dog to do his business, and then carry on and say, we'll see you next time, and everything like that. So I just wanted to offer my testimonial as a lover of a local dog park and what it can do for a neighborhood, and hope you have the same success with this one if it is approved. Thank you.
Hello, Melody Mitchell, also homeowner here in Emeryville, and I can't think of a better way to spend not a lot of money to build community. I'm not a dog owner all, either, but I would feel so much safer walking in my neighborhood, and I, I'm one of the closest neighborhoods to this potential dog park, and I would just love it if we would be able to support that for our community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Mendietha Mitchell, and I've lived in Emeryville for nine and a half years now. I'm not a dog owner, however, I live at Bay Street, and I know a lot of my neighbors have dogs, and they have little, small patches of grass where their dogs can go. But I know our neighbors would be really thrilled with the opportunity to take their dog to a local dog park. I actually used to walk around that area a lot and knew about the under- I actually used to walk around that area a lot, and knew about the underground tunnel that you guys were talking about earlier, because I used to walk that area. However, ever since, there's been a lot more illegal activity happening down there, I have been, I've been taking the longer way around. So I would really appreciate having the opportunity, just as a, you know, regular citizen, to be able to walk through that area, and I love dogs, and, you know, just to be able to play with the dogs for a little bit, so, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Markham, and I'm a resident of Emeryville for the last four and a half years. I think when you talk about a project that has a bigger impact, even though it's a small project, I think this one would be an ideal case of that. You're talking about allocation of money, projects, where to allocate what funds to what projects, and I think that this project even would be smaller in comparison to what you're doing overall with a lot of other projects, but I think it would have a much bigger impact than, or it would have a very big impact, given how small it really is. I think that it would help with, first off, when, to Rob's point about people and their dogs, you have a community of people, and one thing that I think that would do there is give a self-policing aspect to that area, which we know right now is a fairly unsavory area, right? So when you have an area that I believe will be lit at night, you have people, and the building that Rob and I live in, and a few other people here, has dog ownership, I think, of somewhere around 60 to 70 percent. So you're going to have a self-policing aspect to all those people being there, and a sense of self-community there, that will make it safer, and it will take care of a lot of the urban blight that we see in that small corridor. So I think overall, that project will have a much bigger impact, or have a very big impact, even though considerably looking at it, it's a relatively small and probably inexpensive project, given the other projects that you have up here. So Big Bang for, for not much money, I think.
Hi, I'm Maubus Ledford, I'm a two-year homeowner of Emeryville, and I live about two blocks from said location. I have a 10-year-old dog, and I probably walk around that area two or three times a week, and blight is the best word to explain that area. What's interesting is, is that little underpass is like, just the perfect location for something like a dog park. You can't put housing there, you can't put anything, and if that space doesn't get used, then it gets used for mattresses, for shopping carts with like hundreds of mysterious bags. It's crazy the amount of, number of things you see under that, you know, that bridge area when, when it's not being used. And as many people mentioned, like this southwest part of Emeryville would benefit so much by having this park here, where there's nothing right now. And having a place where tons of Emeryville people can visit, not just with dogs, but without dogs, is no longer, will be this unsavory aspect of Emeryville, it's going to be a beautiful place. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kayla Sterling, I am a resident of Emeryville, and I am on the Board of the Emeryville Warehouse Lofts. You've heard a lot of comments tonight about safety and trash, and then turning an unsafe and a messy space into a community project with relatively not that much money. So it seems to me, and I feel many people here tonight, that we're really hoping you make this project a priority. One of the things that we're hoping that you make a priority in this neighborhood is our safety. And there are a lot of small little pockets that are kind of scary to walk around. So any of these projects, this one included, where we can turn, you know, an area that's really unsafe into a place where people will congregate, you know, dogs are kind of making areas safe, don't they? So thank you for considering this, and we really urge you and kind of nudge you as much as we can to pass this project. Thank you.
I'm in favor of the dog park too, but you won't be surprised, I just want to say something about the Greenway that runs behind our building. I do want to thank the staff for putting it on the list for implementation this year, and I think that that's very important, that it not be delayed any further. When we first were looking for a place to relocate in 2013, we were told that the, that dirt strip was fully funded, it was going to be implemented that summer, 2013, that didn't happen. As we progressed through our CUP process, and went through the process of getting access to the Greenway, city staff spent a lot of time with us and working through the intricacies proposed by the Greenway ordinance, or law, whatever it's called. And they have encouraged us to have a sidewalk café in the Greenway, which we've been looking forward to for a long time. Of course, it will help our business, but it's also going to help other surrounding businesses, and of course, in the interim, there's been 175 new residential units added, so there's really a great need for that. And I also want to say that I think the Greenway will only really fulfill its full potential to be a really iconic element of Emeryville when it's complete, so I think all of the phases should be pushed through as rapidly as possible. And just finally, I want to say, you know, as we went along, and we kept saying, well, why isn't this being done? Because we heard it was fully funded and so forth, and the only answer we could get, got from staff was, well, there isn't enough staff time to put the, finish the project, we can't, there are other things we're having to do. And this isn't meant as a criticism of public works or planning and thing, I think it's obvious, they're very overwhelming. I went to the EDC Committee, and I was just stunned to find out that there were 86 projects, 83 of which are fully funded, sitting there in this logjam, and it just strikes me as crazy. I just, so I also hope that the city is going to find ways to ease this process and get these projects that are funded on the road. So thank you.
All right, just really quick, in support of the dog park, I just want to say that being a resident of Bay Street, just having a dog relief area has been phenomenal for our community, for residents to get together, to have conversations, and I could only imagine with having a full, a full dog park down there, what it could do. And very excited to see this kind of, almost like a circular pattern, having, being able to have pedestrians kind of circulate around, walking their dogs, getting involved in the community. This is, this is just wonderful, and I hope it moves forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Sharon Wilcher. Well, I wasn't, this was something new tonight for me, I'm not a dog owner, but I am a Park Avenue resident, and Park Avenue District resident, and I do support the proposed funding for the dog park under the 40th Street overpass. But a few other things that I wanted to mention that are on the CIP. This evening, you're going to hear a presentation for the artwork that's proposed for ECCL. This, just this past week, we had three really exciting workshops continuing for the Public Art Master Plan, and I think that within this year, we'll have that plan completed. Utility boxes, the next phase is actually proposed to go in toward the end of this month, another successful project, and then the Bus Shelter art project, we hope to have the RFP out sometime in 2016. So we're really active, and I do know Maurice mentioned the things, the recommendations that came from the Public Art Committee. We were really encouraged and support the 16, 17 year for the riprap at Point Emery. We have a public art commission that's sort of been in limbo for the last at least three years, and this would help to inform that process, so we, we hope you'll support that. And lastly, I'm just really encouraged to see what's been called out for a recommendation in the CIP for the Center for the Arts. I think I've probably worked on that project in some way for at least the last 10 years on committees, and we've had focus groups and the nonprofit that was formed, but I think that it's been very interesting that through the Public Art Master Plan workshops, there's also been renewed and continuing interest in the project. And I know that a goal for the city, at least what I've understood, is continuing to the creation of a vibrant and memorable city. The arts are very much part of the city's identity, not only in the city of Emeryville, but in the region. And I think so many people are looking forward to an even broader venue for the arts. So including for me, and I think it's been expressed by others in some of the workshops, that not only the creation of a space, but also a space that really supports excellence and innovation and engagement in programming. I think the programming is very important, so I hope that you will support that in the CIP. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward for public comment? Okay, so done, let's proceed with some discussion. Anyone have any salient points they need to make immediately?
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
First off, I want to thank Maurice and his team. A lot of work went into the CIP, and a lot of consideration and a lot of judgment, and I really appreciate the effort that's moving forward. It's quite true that we have monies available here, and we have a very small public work staff. It's like trying to getting a pig through a boa constrictor or something like that. That being said, we have a very challenging project, job here, because we only have a limited number of staff hours, and we have these very enticing projects that we want to move forward. But I have to put in a plug for all the dog park people, because what they are saying about the investment of time and money in a very relatively small project will enhance that entire neighborhood, and that's what, what this city is all about, enhancing the neighborhoods, keeping the neighborhoods safe. So I realize there are difficulties, and Michael Gena has told us about the difficulties of spending Emeryville taxpayers' money on what is essentially Oakland's piece of ground, but it is very clear to me, from the work that Scott and I have done with the West Oakland people and with the Oakland city staff, that they are on board here, and they will work with us to get, move this project through. They will be coming, Oakland staff is coming on Thursday to the Public Works meeting to make a presentation about the opportunities in West Oakland, and the dog park is one of the opportunities. There's certainly other things that are be considered. So as we go forward and categorize, point out what we want to be top on the list here, I hope we don't lose this small dog park, because it can change that neighborhood, and it is, it is not safe walking around there now, I know. And if we can make that investment as soon as possible, I think we'll reap the benefits to it. Aside from that, I think the plan, depending on how we prioritize this, we have the money, we have excellent staff, although not too many, and we should be moving forward. So that, that's my comments.
Mayor, sure.
I want to thank Rob for initiating the petition, that's, now we know who reads The Evil Eye, and Bobby, I think it might have been you, who mentioned that this, this will have a Big Bang for Small Bucks, and I actually agree with that, and every time we've put in some quality of life amenity, it's paid off in spades in terms of that sense of building community. So I want to raise two challenges. I mean, obviously, this is going to go forward, but I have two challenges. One is that all of you who intimated it, maybe organizing yourselves to keep it clean and maintained, that that could be a very nice community association to form more formally, so that would, that would help out the city of Oakland. We have to figure out about maintenance, because that, that piece of land is in Oakland, and towards, towards that, I mean, we could build, we could throw money into it, but I don't know if we have the legal right to continue to maintain it. But the second challenge that I would like is if the mayor would be amenable to signing a letter to the Oakland City Council member who wrote us in support of the dog park, that she used some of her discretionary funds to pay for half of the park. Because it's within her jurisdiction, and it's not even within our jurisdiction, and yet we're going to out, out of improving, you know, sometimes Emeryville's been seen as being parochial, I think we're very regional players, but, you know, it's like Oakland should have some skin in the game here. So that's an ask to send a letter to her to, to, they have discretionary funds. She could write a check like tomorrow to fund this.
I'd support that letter.
Me too.
I'd like to say that, I think we already own the bridge.
Yeah.
And we could just go ahead with lighting, right away, get a lighting design that would suit our future park, and then that is something we could just go ahead on until we work things out with the city of Oakland. And that could make immediate improvements.
That would be enormous help down there, to get light in there, wouldn't everybody agree?
Mm-hmm.
That's spooky. Jack?
In terms of this particular project, I'd like to say that I agree with Ruth about Oakland having some skin in the game. And the other thing I'd like to mention is that in addition to blight, there are also people in the area that are unhoused, and Emeryville has a responsibility to help with the homelessness problem in our neighborhoods. And when the budget comes forward to us, I want us to think about the ways that we're distributing resources, and that it's, it's, I think that you will still have people nearby, that people will be there because there are not other places to go. And so we're going to have to take a different kind of approach and make sure that we have alternatives and solutions to help people. The, the metal scrap place, what is that called, Nora?
Alliance Steel.
Yes, so that's closing in August, right? And who knows what the effect of that is going to be? It could be that people are more desperate at that point. But at any rate, I hope that we remember this conversation when we come back to our budget, to think about the effects that this might have, and the ways that we can contribute beyond a dog park, because I, I have a feeling it's going to, it's still going to be necessary.
Mm-hmm. I am also inclined to support this dog park, as well as the Greenway. I think it's always great when we can have more open space and community space. But I do want to thank Councilmember Asher for reminding us that there's a human element to, to this situation, that it's, that there is, there is illegal activity, there is blight, there are shopping carts, there are mattresses, there is trash, it is messy, but there's a reason for that, it's because people are being displaced, and I think that's, again, I agree, I want to see this addressed when we look at the budget. That said, I love dogs, I love parks, I, I don't agree that this is a small amount of money. I think it's a great amount of money, I don't take lightly spending $300,000 out of the city's budget, but with the promise of it being a well-used space, you know, we just saw the skate park become a fabulously used place that really is bringing folks together, and I'd like to see the same thing happen with this dog park. So that said, we're, this is part of a greater conversation that we're having about the capital improvement program, and I also want to thank staff for, for doing this on a fast track, for making it happen so quickly. However, I hope in future years, we can have more time to build more community engagement around this process. future years, we can have more time to build more community engagement around this process because there are so many projects. And while they're funded, as Councilmember Davis noted, it is, you know, getting that pig through a python. We want to know, really prioritize with the community helping us do that. So that's my only note. Is there any further comments for staff?
Are there any questions, any projects in the list that you're unsure of, not proceeding, like the trailers at the Rex Center? Do you want me to pull that one off the sheet?
We had some discussion about this at the, which committee are we on?
Budget Governance.
Yeah, okay. So the, I have two things that I'm concerned about. One is that ECDC needs a new roof. And that is desperately needed. It's been leaking for a long time. And if you have to move the children out to another space, we need, what we know is that we don't have enough public space to move people into when we're doing these kinds of renovations. And I, for that reason and because the ECCL, our grand experiment, has not yet begun and we don't know what's going to, if everything's going to be adequate, right? If we're going to need any transitional space. I think that we should hold off on that. One of the suggestions that was made at that committee was to think about the Bridge courtroom because it is at the East Bay, you know, shopping center as a site for the, for the substation if we need that. And then another thing that I'd just like to forecast for the future is that in the long term, that same site has been talked about for years as affordable senior housing.
Correct.
And what I would like us to think about is the fact that, yes, we need senior housing, we also need family housing. Seniors can live in family housing, but children cannot live in senior housing. And in terms of having more of a mixed community and that being a space where there are resources for seniors and children, really accessible in terms of being close to the ECCL, I don't know if that is still the best use for that. Because I believe we have a tremendous deficit in terms of affordable family housing in the city.
I have some comments about some of the projects. You know, for the 80-plus projects that are here, you know, at some point, it actually would be nice to have a sentence or two about each of them, but, but we don't really have the time tonight.
Correct, correct.
So, but I do have a question about the Lumex poles and LEDs.
Sure.
Because I thought we had already switched out all our street, streetlights for LEDs.
We switched out all the Cobra heads. So all the ones that you'd see on a wooden telephone pole or the ones that look similar to that style. Those are all LEDs now. And so the only ones that we have that are not LEDs are the ones on the greenway, which are induction lighting, which is actually a very efficient light. So we wouldn't want to change those to LEDs. And then, of course, these Lumex, which are metal halide, very high maintenance and not very efficient compared to the LEDs. So it's only those lights.
And that's a minority of streetlights at this point in the city, right?
Well, there's quite a few of them.
Okay.
Yes.
And then in terms of the Arts Center, our ill-fated building back here, you had suggested a study as the next step for that building. Is that right?
A feasibility study. What we want to do is dust off the old plans and figure out if we could, if that's the set, if that's what we want to proceed with, that, that concept. And then, of course, meet with the, the artists and the group that was involved with preparing that concept to see if that's the programming that we want to continue with. Or do we want to do something different in there? And that's what, we would need some help preparing.
Well, the annual celebration of the arts needs a permanent place.
Right. So that needs to be looked at, right.
That's, that's like a top priority, I think.
Right.
Because poor Sharon goes surfing around every year.
Exactly. So, but I think you'd want that facility to be used year-round. And of course, annual exhibits once, you know, once a year.
One month out of the year.
Right, one month out of the year. So I, we need to look at the, I mean, I think originally that project was intended to be run by a nonprofit and the city was going to be minimally involved with the operations. So we need to look at the programming. How is that going to work? Is it going to be a city facility, city-operated, or is it going to be some outside group running it?
Well, and there were other things. For instance, at the ECCL, we thought we were going to have a theater space. And now it turns out that the district actually doesn't have any stage for graduation. They're going to have to rent stages for graduation. And there are no stages at the ECCL. So in terms of having that kind of use as well, it was, it was planned under different terms.
Right.
But I believe, wasn't there a theater in the, in the proposed design?
There's a theater.
Okay, yeah.
Then under the transportation section, the railroad quiet zones, the four quadrant gates.
Right.
Which now we have some money, you're showing, that it's partially funded.
Well, we're showing $250,000 in it. It doesn't, this shows all the funding. It doesn't show what, you know, what's partially funded. I should direct you, in your staff report, there are project descriptions for every project. I have most of them memorized, but not all of them. But I believe we're showing $250,000 in the last year.
The project's $4.25 million in total.
Yeah, it's about a $5 million project. At the time, we initially studied it about six, seven years ago now. So it needs to be looked at once again.
Well, I just, I just want to say that that's a project that's now ACTC has forwarded to MTC as part of, as part of Alameda's plans. And so I think we can push that a little higher up on the timeline because that's now being recommended for funding from, from MTC.
Well, that would make sense. And if we, if we could find funding for it, then that definitely would move up in the schedule, right?
Right. So I'm saying that that's, that's happening now.
That's good, okay.
So maybe we could add a little. So the other thing, maybe in the next version of this, it'd be nice to see if we have grant funding for certain projects with timelines by which they have to be encumbered or spent.
Yeah.
Because I'd hate to turn back money because we're not able to get moving on it.
Right. And so that's one of the reasons the, the greenway section didn't get pushed forward because we had all these other projects that had timelines, like the Safe Roots to Transit Project.
Right.
And these other projects, you know, and a lot of the ROPS money that we were rushing to try to spend those monies before we lost it. And so, yeah, that's typically.
What I don't have from this, this report tonight is, you know, where's the clock ticking that we really have to get moving?
Understood, okay.
That's all I'm asking for.
Okay.
I'd like to add something to the bicycle and pedestrian section of.
Add a project?
Yeah, add a project. We've talked about it in the past over many years in our city, which is the Pickle Works path connecting Doyle Street to 53rd Street. And so, you know, to, to look at the cost of an easement through those properties. And this would really enhance our new Center for Community Life access from North Emeryville, people walking and biking to school.
Right. I'm aware of the project. I remember it had started moving forward in condemnation. And I got stuck up with the property owner really not cooperating and making it as difficult as possible legally to try to acquire it. So I, I think what we'd want to do is figure out, well, what year do you want to pursue that?
Well, can we get it on the list, though?
We can definitely, there's a lot of unfunded projects that are not on the list.
Yeah, because, and also the Christie Avenue cleanup, right? The remediation, that's unfunded for the housing, is that?
No, the, the housing project's fully funded, except for the, we haven't identified how we're going to pay for the remediation. So it's on a, it's part of a project, but the remediation part of it hasn't been identified, the funding source.
Yeah, okay.
We haven't listed every unfunded project we have. If you look at the bike plan, there's a lot of projects in there that are not appearing here. What we did, what we tried to do is show those ones that we know that we're going to be able to budget for over the next five years. That's what we identified here.
While we don't have necessarily some of the funds needed for some of our projects, like the Arts Center, I think that looking at it as a process and considering designs that we could institute early and develop later is something we should consider. And there's a way that we could have that structure working for us and our strong community needs in some more immediate way that maybe would help us find monies later to make it into a grand and great space. But I think if we look at it as a potential temporary beginning, we, we could benefit from that.
Well, the way we're showing it right now, the first year is the feasibility study to define what we want. The second year being fully design everything. And there's, you know, we have, we have $10 million, $10.5 million of funding budgeted. So if we can come up with a design that we could, if it's going to cost more than $10.5 million, then of course, we'd have to postpone when you build it. But hopefully, the feasibility study will do cost estimates to let us know what it is we can build with the money we have. And then hopefully, if we figure out that we want more than we can afford at this point, then we would try to raise money.
All right. Any more comments on the CIP? Okay, let's move on.